Feel more?
Haven't seen.
Seventy-eight?
I'm frail last Monday.
That's the way he's been. And that's just him. You feeling great?
Good.
Good evening, everybody. Today is Tuesday, June seventh. We're going to have a regular meeting at seven o'clock. And we're going to stand and do the pledge of allegiance. And then we start. Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic which stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'd like to honor moments silence for honor the military, firefighters, road workers, and sheriffs deputies as they serve our community here in Brown. Thank you. Does that word speak? Roll call, please.
Dustin McLaughlin.
President.
Dustin McLaughlin.
President.
Dusty Black. President.
Okay, next thing on the agenda is the physical officer's report. Tracy, you have the floor.
Um, I don't have anything to say right now except I need you guys to get on top of this bill to get them into me or we're going to be late on some. We've already discussed that a little bit briefly. But we are late on some, but we're late on a lot more than, um, than you know. Also, when I say I need help, I need somebody in here that can take some of the workload. I don't mean I need help with my job. I know how to do my job. I need somebody to take some of this workload you keep giving to me. With payroll, with HR, with fiscal officer job. That's enough, and then you're asking to do more? It's getting, it's getting overwhelming. And so, this is my request to you that Susan Administrator come in that she tried to look and get somebody to take back the HR and the payroll because there's just too much of workload. And I hope you guys understand what I mean now by help. Anybody have questions, Mr.?
So, you stay for HR?
HR and payroll, that's what we had. The person that was in here for HR and payroll.
Have we gotten any applications in on the administrative assistant that's posted?
No one has turned in any applications outside of the ones that we talked about. And none for the zoning, none for the administrative assistant. Those are still existing. So, when the administrator comes in, she could take that responsibility to hire the administrative assistant that will be helping her. Because nobody's responding.
That's all I have, um...
I'd like to make a motion to accept the physical officer's report.
I'll stick it.
Roll call, vote please.
Dustin McLaughlin.
Yes.
Dustin McLaughlin.
Yes.
Dusty Black.
Yes.
Okay, so the next thing is old business. Uh, in the old business, we have an issue with fireworks that we discussed, um, I believe it was the last meeting. Been a couple weeks ago. But, um, so there's a discussion on... There's been a ban on fireworks, and then the governor, I believe, if I correct Captain Flag, didn't the governor say you should shoot fireworks off of the state? Is that what he said?
Yep, on certain, certain days, um...
Oh, it is certain days?
It's not, it's not a...
Certain holidays.
Yeah, it's certain holidays and then, uh, the days in conjunction with the holidays or weekends before it's... It's got several, it's got several days that it's blanketed to cover and things in conjunction with the holidays, but it's not a blanket all year long thing.
Okay. So, anyway, we, uh, you know, we were approached about a situation in one part of town in, uh, about fireworks issues and a lot of fireworks going off. And, um, and we've, we've talked about that. We've approached legal and give us two cents. You've had some communication with the two, Tim. You got anything to add to that?
I guess the big thing here is we need a good measurement from the whole community on where the community falls with this. So, we could make it as simple as a ballot issue. My biggest concern with this is it's easy for us to legislate it, but the burden of enforcing it
Yes.
falls on two contracted cars. And something like Fourth of July, there's a lot going on that night, and there's a lot of resources. And I just, we could pass it off. But number one, will the prosecutor's office back us up on a criminal case? Which I think we already have some protections in place to cover. Number two, do you want our two contracted cars to shoot some fireworks calls or DUIs on the big holidays? So, to me, it's, uh, yeah. It was brought up, all these other communities have it, but they also have their own police forces. So, the enforceability of something like this, puts a big burden on Captain Flag. And I just think it's unrealistic to expect a resolution to keep that in check.
Well, I'd like to say this is, we have a ban now. And I haven't seen anybody in the media just because I haven't seen or heard of... I've never heard of the police taking anybody to jail now. So, what would be the difference between having a ban now and, uh, uh, or having a ban later as opposed to having it now? I mean, there's no different, uh, there's no difference to me. Um, and I can't see how, if the sheriff or not concerned about taking the people, uh, people to jail or prosecuting them now, I don't see why now, all of a sudden, it's such a big issue that we either got to think about putting something on a ballot or that we're... I understand the need for discussion, but that's just kind of how I feel about that. So, we had a couple people that wanted to say something.
Well, one of the claims, right? We're very uniquely positioned to be the only community that has a fireworks factory as a part of our businesses. They've been very supportive of our fire department over the years. And to me, it's a slap in the face to them. It's okay to buy them in Jefferson, but you can't shoot them off. So, that needs to be...
It's the same ban. It's the same ban. It's not going to be a different kind of a ban later. A ban is a ban.
We, we have prosecuted people for fireworks. That's... As in the discussion, we will always respond to issues of safety, always. And we have charged people. We have confiscated fireworks in the past. What I'm, what I try to explain is that on holidays when fireworks are prevalent, you can look on a regional dispatch board throughout the county. And there are fireworks calls stacked. We are going to continue to be police for the most serious, serious calls that are pending. So, those will get fireworks. The calls about fireworks in the neighborhood that are left open-ended, that aren't providing a threat or creating a threat of, uh, safety that aren't involving individuals with impairment, we enforce. We always have. We will continue to. The law now, as it's written, provides us that option still. It's not a blanket to go out and shoot fireworks any way you want. You have to be sober. You have to be an adult, responsible party. You have to be doing it within safety guidelines. So, when there are significant threats to that, to safety of individuals, we're going to respond. And if appropriate, we will cite people to court, just like we always have. So, that's the difference. The difference is that we have to weigh the priority level of the call when we take it. So, if it's there and it's egregious, it will be dealt with, so...
How many complaints have you had about fireworks in the last five years? Can you ask me who a person had? Well, not... You're elected officials, and you surely should have heard something. Sheila Greer is a lot because she brings it up about different things. But how many complaints have you had in the last five years? I think we're jumping at the ban rate in the wrong way. I could, I could even help Andy enforce the issue on illegal. But I think we're going about it the wrong way. I think we're going about it the wrong way because if you had standards to back you up, then, then you've got something to fall back on. Well, just because you got a few complaints facing on one street about every year, a crowd of people going to town, I'd be willing to work with Andy on the issue and even working at night. But I think we're going about it the wrong way. If you, over the years, if you had a lot of complaints, a lot of fires, a lot of injuries, you got something to back you up for right now, you know? Just because one or two people don't like fireworks.
All right, done.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chief Right. First, we have, uh, she went in first. She was, okay.
Go ahead.
My name is Deborah Hardy, and I live at twelve oh six Liston Road. And I live in a residential area where you're house to house to house. You don't have that open space. I'm not against fireworks. That's not what I'm saying. I'm talking about the danger where even though... How many of y'all have actually read the law that Governor Dwyane signed? Have y'all actually read it? I think y'all need to read the legislation because as Sheriff Flag said, you're not supposed to be drunk and you're supposed to be sober and all this stuff. But do they do that? Do people actually do that? No. I've seen people doing fireworks, shooting guns in the air. There's nothing in this legislation that says that when you have fireworks, you can shoot guns. But people do. What I am concerned about is the danger that comes with these fireworks. And being house to house to house, and you got hundreds of people in this area? People are on your property? I went to the extent to where I got a no trespassing sign put in my yard, no loitering, no soliciting, just to protect me. But again, I'm dealing with hundreds of people. And that might be in another neighborhood. Do I go to them when they walk in my yard and disobey the sign and say, "Get out of my yard"? And what if they tell me, "No, put me off your yard"? Then you got a confrontation. There's too much danger involved with these fireworks. Not only that, you got your property. What goes up must come down. They're right there on the corner where my property is. And it could be somebody else's that don't even be on the corner. That goes up, a lot of it comes down. And I've seen it on my roof. How many of you are going to help get my roof repaired?
I've had it on my roof.
But again, damage, you pay for it yourself.
That's why I'm insured for.
But again, I shouldn't have to go to my insurance people
Right.
and, and tell them I've got this damage because of a firework. And guess what happens? I still get penalized because my rate goes up. So, I'm trying to be proactive. And again, I know there's some of y'all that might be against it. But let it happen in your yard. I don't think y'all would be happy if that happened in your yard. Hundreds of people, fifty people, even to the point where I've seen this. A lady took her car and blocked the street intersection from Liston to Erickson so no traffic could go up there so they could do fireworks. Is that not illegal?
I require a permit from the township.
See? But again, I guarantee you she probably didn't have it. But then you walk in, tell her to move, you run into the risk of confrontation. And the way people are now, and with the new law that's passing, what, next week? Where you can conceal carry without a permit? You're going to really encounter maybe possibility of problems. Because even though people know they're not supposed to carry, they do it now. And it's going to be more of a problem when the law passes next week.
If they're carrying illegally, likely they're carrying illegally today. The new law just makes a provision for those that are capable of passing those backgrounds.
But you have the bad people that could be...
But we've always had, we've always had those.
And that's what I'm saying. There's going to be more of them that's going to even do it. So, I'm basically saying there's a hazard to this. Fireworks have always been a hazard. And just because we have a building that sells them, you weren't supposed to sell them off when people go by them in Ohio anyway. But people been doing that. So, to me, that's not an issue. As far as putting it on the ballot, there's nothing in this legislation that says it has to go on the ballot before the people. It says the municipal... I think y'all should probably pull it and read it. It says each municipality can make a decision as far as banning them. You do not have to take it to the people to put it on the ballot. So, I'm suggesting that y'all really agree the law, which goes in effect July the first.
Thank you.
Yes, uh...
Give me name, name address, please.
It was, uh, Linda was...
Glenn Thacker. I live on Rickar Avenue, four oh six, at the very end. And, uh, the gentleman there was saying, "How many calls have you had"? Well, I've called, I know, twice, year before last. And Officer Flag was talking about, um, you know, the responsibility, um, you had to be sober, you had to be of age. What about one, two, three o'clock in the morning when I'm trying to sleep? I'm as patriotic as the next guy. I'll tip, I'll, I'll say the pledge of allegiance to the flag, you know, I'll, you know, prayer, I'm all for that. But I like my sleep and my downtime. I'm an insomniac. When they're letting fireworks off at two or three o'clock in the morning, everybody's partying. And like the lady there just said, there's been a many a time where I've had to go out in my yard and clean up the bottle rockets. Just the other day, I had to go out and clean some bottle rockets out of my son's yard the other day. It is an issue. And, uh, like I said, I have no problem with you doing it within limitations. But when you start doing it one, two, three o'clock in the morning, there's a certain cutoff time when you got to say, "Hey, enough is enough."
Cutoff time is at midnight.
That's fine with me, you know?
That's what cutoff time is.
And I know the kids, they like to see the fireworks. And I'm, you know, I'm all for that. But there's, there's, there's a cutoff point and... But, but, you know, you're gonna, you're just going to say, "Hey, okay, I'm going to say it's fireworks, but you got to stop shooting them off at twelve o'clock." You think people are going to do that? Absolutely not. Been there, I've done that. And you can check the records, Officer Flag, to see how many times Glenn Thacker's called the sheriff's department about fireworks.
Well, I know he can check for me. I know he can check for me.
Thank you. Linda, you next.
Linda Rowley, two four six South Diamond Hill. It looks to me like we have an issue with different, you know, with... But in your situation, why can't Captain Flag, why can't you have a car sit there? If you know it's coming, wouldn't it be better off to head it off at the pass before hundreds of people got started and they got, they got partying good before you went up there? You know, if you just put it to kind of curb it before it started? Because, I mean, not where I live. You know, we enjoy, you know, if we have a cookout and have fireworks, we did, what, two years ago? You know, we enjoy that kind of stuff. And we have, we have animals. So, I mean, it's not like, you know, you shoot things up and get attention and you don't, you know, run dogs and goats and everything else off. But if you do it responsibly, you know, I, I would hate to see you guys put a ban on fireworks so that we couldn't have them. But I understand your situation. But I think that the sheriff's department should work with you to stop it before it starts.
But what you're looking at is a different area. Because the dad lives on Baby Farmisville Road. He's got six acres of land. We, we used to go out there. And you're right, the next house, six acres of land. You're not disturbing really your next neighbor because they're not on top of you.
Right.
But I'm really suggesting that if y'all have not been down Liston and Erickson, take a ride past there so you can see that it's house to house to house. There is no space to where what you're doing would be appropriate. It just don't exist. I've got a fence, and my neighbor's right next to it. So, we don't have that luxury like you do. Because we're in the residential part. You're in probably the country part. So, that makes a difference.
It does. And that's what they need to assess. You know, I would hate to see them do a township-wide ban where our family can't gather and do a saving.
Are you setting them up now, though? You already told them all because you said you just did it.
We did a couple years ago.
But you've done it before, right?
Yeah, we've done it.
Okay. So, so you despite the ban, you still set them off?
Of course we did.
And you did it reasonably, right?
Of course we did. I mean, you know, they didn't come and visit us or nothing. I mean, you know, and it was nothing elaborate.
You didn't have any complaints either.
No, we didn't.
Right, because you're, you're, uh...
Russell Back's had a $200 one. You know, as far as the parameters of fireworks, it's like they have bottle rockets, they have, you know, black cats, those little snaps. But, you know, what I see a lot is, is these big percussion, like borderline bombs. You know, when you're talking about a residential area, you're talking about, you know, fireworks that crack windows, um...
Stick foundation.
After the Fourth of July, I pick up a bottle rocket, I get up on my roof. I always got bottle rockets on the roof. I've seen, I've even had it happen to me where you set off a firework and it goes awry and shoots out the side. You're talking about damage to vehicles. You know, I'm just a little amazed, Chief Right, that you, you wanted to get involved in the politics of all this, you know, in regards to public safety, you know?
That's part of the job, sir.
Yeah, okay, well, hear me out. You know, as far as, uh, you know, uh, say it's drought season and they're letting off fireworks, you know? You're trying to deal with the house possibly catching on fire. Uh, people, people burning themselves or other people getting injured, you know? Seems to me that you should be more focused on the public safety than getting involved in the politics and calling people out being so pro-firework, you know? You know, as far as the parameters of the fireworks, yeah, yeah, you got fireworks when people are out having a good time and letting them off responsibly. Then you got these bombs that are capable of igniting a house in minutes flat. So, you know, I just think it opens the door to, uh, you know, major problems. And, but, you know, the township is so diverse. You got a lot of rural area where safety let off just about any kind of firework. And over in the flat, like a lady said, the houses are so close together that, you know, it wouldn't be nothing for somebody set off a firework and to shoot through somebody's window. And, you know, they may have kids or anything. And then next thing you know, the house is on fire. So, you know, I just think there's a lot more to look at other than, you know, some fireworks. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Step one would be to quantify, you can pull your call reports, fireworks-related. You can pull your run reports. Give us, I mean, this, this is the first time since I've been trustee we've had anybody come and testify in a meeting bringing up the fireworks issue. So, you know, the more that we promote it, the more that the community is on board. We're getting, it'll give us feedback to do the right thing instead of passing the legislation telling everybody how to live, but then not being able to enforce it again. You're going to call the police after you hear something. So, then it's their job to find who shot off the big, the big bomb-type things, like the Korean finale of the fireworks, those kind of things. So, uh, give a little bit of data and then we can make an educated decision on, on what to do.
Can I say one more thing? I don't want to be out of line, but I, I just think some people are not seeing the seriousness of the danger. And as the gentleman said, safety should be number one priority for every resident that lives in the township. The reason why nothing has been addressed at any of the meetings is because for the last four years, I've been calling the sheriff's office. And I'm thinking, okay, they'll deal with it. They'll deal with it. Well, nothing ever really got done. Last year, Sheriff Flag dispossessed one of his patrol persons. Was the worst thing that could have ever happened because she came out, she talked to the people, and I didn't go up to the patrol so I really didn't hear the conversation. But it must have been something like this. Y'all just be careful what you doing. Just be responsible. And she drove off. Never saw the patrol car again. These people are so bad that they are actually in the street. If the patrol person would have came back around later on, she wouldn't have been able to get her cruiser through the street because you got fireworks after fireworks. Cars have to stop. This is literally in the street. And Liston is a busy street. They have to stop until the fireworks stops doing whatever it's doing. Now, y'all think that's not a hazard? I guess I must have a definition of what safety is. Because that's a hazard, it's like you said, somebody's car. If I'm seeing it, if I see it now and it's getting big yet and I drive by, what if I drive over and then all of a sudden it starts spitting out the sparks and stuff? It's possibly blowing up my car. There's too much danger, too much danger that is involved with these fireworks. And I wish y'all could see the danger in it. And again, I'm not against none of that because I'd love to see fireworks go off, but people who know what they are doing. I go to them shows all the time because they know what they doing. But these people around here in the neighborhood, they are not licensed to do that. I guarantee you they haven't had any training on how to do that. And I've had some. My grandson and I sitting in the yard and one Miss, Miss Flatter and came straight at me and my grandson and I had to pull him and run out the way. There's too much danger involved, too much danger. And I'm trying to be proactive because it's gonna be a problem, it's gonna be a problem. He won't be responding to fireworks, he may be responding to somebody that hurt. It's, it's just too, it's, it's just too much of a danger. They are not anything to play with, with people who are not experienced with. And he's right, the big bomb ladies, there's one of them, they had this on like a string and they throw it in the street and it shakes my whole house. And not only that, it's messing up the streets, the roads. I'm surprised y'all don't even see that. And I've had to call, they don't clean up their debris. I've had to call and tell, and say, hey, who's cleaning up this debris that's left out here? Who y'all's report? I called last year and when I got home from work, somebody from the township cleaned it up. I wasn't going to. It's too much danger involved in these fireworks, it's too much danger.
Thank you. I do wanna say before we move on, that Captain Flag did send me, uh, three calls from last year, but also it was reported that during the July 1st of 2021 through July 21st of 2021, they were seeing sixteen calls related to fireworks. So sixteen calls from 1 to 21st, so that's like twenty days.
That's gentlemen here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi, my name is Allison Spence, I live at 329 Baker Avenue. The county attorney's supposed to put three stop signs, we thought he was gonna put there. We only have one, it's right about one that you, the gentleman's in fire department, he lives in the work fire department, he lives right there on the corner. They come around the corner, they fly through there all the time, so the police can't be here all the time. They hit my fence, tore my fence down. They went in Mr. Thacker's yard, they went over to those people's yard. Now they're threatening, a lot of them putting tree, uh, trees and stuff like that, big trees on their, around the property, they don't want, they want them to come through their yard.
Is Mater where the-
And this is the odd one thing, you know, them flying through there, one of the kids gonna get hit out there. You got kids out there playing. I told the police, well, they have, go up the road. You got a problem on the both sides of the road, you can park on both sides of the street. A lot of them parks in the street, got, uh, a big RV parked out there, a lot of times they park out in the street. I told the police officer, he said, y'all want, you guys go to, to the media and say something. We need some kind of a, some kind of a sign, some kind of a park right there about around the street. We've got, uh, po holes there when you try to avoid people coming up down the road and a lot of people swerve, missing po holes.
Thank you. I do wanna say that the road department has been out patching holes. So I, Kirsten McFarlane is over the road department and we have the road-
Well, the road supervisor last year, they were gonna, Captain, they were gonna fix, uh, some of them, fix the piles and none of them been fixed over there.
Oh, where?
Mater.
On Mater.
Mater, we've been working in that area, it's gonna take, it's gonna take some time, sir. I mean, we're three guys in the daytime and two guys at night, we're making our way through-
But it wasn't you, it was, it was other people, it was, last year, the young guy said they didn't wanna fix the road.
Oh, okay, well, we're, we're working that way.
I just didn't want you to-
Okay, we're, we're working that way.
Yeah.
Now, is Mater where the, the RTA bus turned around, is that, that's on there? Okay, because this is not a stop sign there either.
Mater's up in the Bricker Platte, Radcliffe. That's where I live.